Hi, everyone. Welcome to Lean In Olympia, our candidate forum, part two. We are very happy to be here today. My name is Meg Martin. I am the Director of Integrative Services for Interfaith Works and one of your co-hosts of Lean In Olympia.
I'm Corey Passon, Director of Interfaith Relations with Interfaith Works. Great to be here. Thank you all for being here.
Lean In Olympia is our monthly show that airs both on video on YouTube and in podcast forum, wherever you get your podcasts. And we feature conversations at the crossroads of justice, humanity, and belief with many of our community's best and brightest. And we love to platform folks doing amazing stuff. And that is why we're here today, to meet our candidates for the Olympia City Council.
We want to welcome each of you today. We'll have this space as a forum for you to share your views. This also is a place for our viewers to learn about pressing issues in our community and to hear views from prevailing leaders on those issues. We appreciate the Sky Bear Media for hosting us today. And Meg will talk a little bit about the structure of our candidate forum today.
So we are going to be able to have each statement, each question stated, and then the candidates will respond in a rotating sequence. And we are asking that each response be no more than two minutes in length. And we will hold up our trusty little 20-second sign when you've got 20 seconds left. Everyone feel ready to go? Okay. We will start with a two-minute opening statement from each candidate. And Clark, would you like to start us off?
Thank you for having me. My name's Clark Gilman, and I am currently serving on Olympia Council and running for reelection to position four. I was initially appointed to City Council in 2016. And across my time, I've been really honored and pleased that we have brought into the city many services that the city organization had said no to for a long time: homelessness services, street outreach, social services for downtown, staffed climate, climate change mitigation sort of work, and affordable housing work. I'm really pleased about all of those things. And we're facing a tough budget this year, but I'm super optimistic that the entire organization is pulling together to make the most of the revenue we have and the opportunities for new revenue and continue to serve the community.
Hi, I'm Robert Vanderpoel. For the last year and a half, I've been on the Olympia City Council when I was appointed. I'm in position six. This is my first time running. So this is kind of my first go at this. You know, for me, I think the issues that are most important to me and the stuff I work on the most is affordability crisis, meeting our climate goals through investment, and really making sure our city is accessible and welcoming to folks. And that's current and future generations. I also work on a lot of interlocal committees and committees with the council. I'm probably one of the busiest council members because I keep volunteering for more and more work, from climate work to transportation work, to housing, and so on and so forth. And so I love this city. I'm raising my son here. I'm rooting myself in this community, me and my wife, and Charlie. And I love living here. And I hope to get your vote by talking about the issues that mattered, folks.
My name is Caleb Geiger. I'm running for Olympia City Council, position seven. This is my first time running, but I decided that it was important to get involved with civic leadership. Because when I was born, my mom worked a union job. She worked at Safeway. We lived in Moses Lake, Washington. And with that job, she supported a family of five. My dad was a stay-at-home dad for the first couple of years of my life. And when we moved to Portland, my mom lost that job. She didn't have it anymore. And by the time I was a teenager, I was helping my family deliver newspapers in order for us to be able to make ends meet. I've had a lot of great opportunities in my life. I'm a first-generation college student. I was a first-generation law student. And I now work for the state as an attorney. But that being said, you know, I'm still a renter, and I have no path towards being able to afford a home by myself. And I know that there are so many people out there, whether they're my colleagues at the state or whether they're folks just like my mom, who are working jobs at grocery stores or, you know, coffee shops, changing people's tires, that have a hard time making ends meet. And so I decided now is the time to jump in and address the affordability crisis. I've been, you know, really impressed with what the city has done in the past years. It's been very encouraging to see. This is such a wonderful community. It's a community that's based on compassion, on belonging, on exploring yourself. We have a long history of being that way. And so I decided it was time to make my community a better place. So that's why I'm running.
Hi, I'm Wendy Carlson, and I'm running for Olympia City Council, position number four. I'm a lifelong resident of Olympia. I'm a fourth-generation Olympian. I want my kids to look up at the city. I grew up with pride, but like many of you, I'm concerned. Our streets are less safe. More people are struggling with addiction and mental health issues. And we're facing the biggest deficit that we've had in the city's history. I'm running to help move Olympia forward. My focus is revitalizing our downtown. It has a rich history, but it's struggling. I want to support those experienced homelessness while also protecting the well-being of our downtown and small business community. I bring over 20 years of experience helping people struggling with addiction and mental health issues, getting the resources and support they need while maintaining accountability. I spent my career working for the Washington State Department of Corrections as a community corrections officer, partnering closely with law enforcement. I understand this is difficult work and is crucial, community support and leadership for public safety. We need a system where police and firefighters are a part of a broader network of support. I'll prioritize fairness, transparency, and community engagement to address crime and safety. Growth is inevitable. I believe Olympia can provide affordable housing for low and mental income families by streamlining permits, inspections, and impact fees. We need a smart plan that allows for high-density housing, protect our neighborhoods, and support local businesses. Housing is a complex issue, and I'm committed to working with all stakeholders, residents, developers, and local government to find real solutions. Olympia is the capital of our beautiful state, and it should be the cleanest, safest, and most welcoming city in Washington. I want to foster a respectful, inclusive community where everyone feels heard, regardless of background, identity, or politics. As a woman and a lesbian, I know what it feels like to be marginalized. I promise to listen, represent, and elevate voices because good policy is built on hearing different perspectives.
Our first question in a rotating sequence is for you, Robert, to begin. What central values do you bring to this role that will guide your decision-making in civic leadership?
I really do appreciate that question. You know, for me, I think that gets to the core of what is my central values is to kind of look at who I am and where I come from, right? So my whole family is working-class background. And I would even say working poor, right? They're from all over the country. I have a history of my family going way back to even coal miners in West Virginia. I've always had very union-centric, working-class folks in my family. And for me, as a council member, it's really trying to use that background to think about the folks in our community that are not doing well right now, to think about the injustice of the economy and where things are, right? Thinking about the folks that are just getting by, right? I would, I say the word working poor, but it's true. We have a lot of folks in this community who are sliding backwards because, not because they're not working hard, not because of other variety of reasons, it's because they are in an economy where things are becoming more and more expensive. And so as a city council, for me, as a council member, it's to make sure that we fill those needs and see what we can do to slow that decline, right? To see what we can do when it comes to homelessness, when it comes to the debts people deal with in their lives, right? Can we make housing affordable while raising wages? Can we ensure that folks who are struggling are welcome here and don't have to leave because of the cost of living? So that's kind of core to my principle.
Thank you.
Yeah, I've been a public servant for my entire career. And it seems to me that, you know, our federal government particularly is at a unique trajectory in U.S. politics. And that provides an opportunity for Olympia to lead as an example. You know, we've seen the results of entrenched politicians clinging to power rather than passing on to the next generation and choosing that leadership. We've seen populist backlash dismantling valuable public programs that many of our most vulnerable communities rely on. And frankly, we've seen a government that now is beginning to assault truth as a whole. So when I think about civic leadership, you know, three core principles really come to mind in terms of how I want to lead. And the first of that is with integrity. You know, I was raised in a rural community where your word meant everything. As a public servant, you know, I've been in a position where I understand that helping the programs that many Washingtonians rely on requires tens of thousands of public servants to show up every day and choose accountability and transparency to ensure that Washingtonians have the programs that they need. And every day, when I go to court, the court relies on me to tell the truth, to know what the truth is and find it. And I think that that is so important because when our government obscures what the truth is, we no longer have the ability to see harms that are caused by policies. We no longer have the ability to measure them. Also, leading with humility. One of the hardest parts about being a public servant and, you know, stepping into a very public campaign is that your life becomes very public. And, you know, that means that, you know, when you're at the doors or when you're in social media, people come at you for just about everything, whether, you know, your hair's too long or your beard's too long. Or have you lived here long enough, you know? And part of that, to me, you know, it's not about me. It's about the people in the city who need, again, those services that the city provides. It's about the most vulnerable. So putting my own ego aside and recognizing that we have a job to do, and we're going to do it.
Yeah, I think one of the biggest things that I bring to the table is I'm pragmatic. I really believe in listening to everyone, whether I agree or disagree. I just was asked this on Facebook, you know, how do you get along with people that you might not agree with? And I really believe that you have to listen with respect, whether you agree or disagree with them. I think that that's really important. I think that that's where good policy lies. We don't, Clark and I don't have to agree on things, but, you know, if we can be respectful with each other and come to a compromise, I think that's where great policy lies. I also believe my roots in Olympia, like I remember how Olympia was. And Olympia has gone through a lot of changes. And I've doorballed a lot. I doorballed in 2021, and I doorballed now. And, you know, the overwhelming thing that I hear at the door is people don't come downtown. And whether that is truth or not truth, you know, I come downtown all the time. And I try to tell them that, you know, downtown has gotten better. I think the city has done a good job of making things better down here, downtown. But I think, you know, we need to make Olympia welcoming for people that have been here for a very long time and people that are new to the community. So I think that's super important. You know, as an open lesbian woman, I've been gay since the 80s. I'm well aware of how communities are marginalized. I really believe that there are communities right now that are going through stuff that I went through in the 80s and 90s. And I think it's really important that we just get back to being respectful about how we treat people. And really, the overall encompassing word is kindness, just to be kind to people.
I'm really glad to hear all three of your values answers. And I think across a career doing union and community organizing, and in this last decade of city service, I've had more complicated conversations about values. But I think what I really start from and where my center is are values that I learned from my grandma. Like, one anecdote that my aunts would often tell is, at the end of the Dust Bowl, they ended up near Tri-Cities in eastern Washington, running migrant housing. And two guys come with bindles on their back, and they come to the back porch of the store and say, "Do you have any food?" And my aunt's telling them to get lost, get a job. And my grandma comes out and says, "If somebody says they're hungry, they're hungry. If somebody says they're cold, they're cold. And if somebody says they're tired, they need rest." And that's been profound in my extended family and profound in my own life, that just taking people at face value, rather than trying to decide whether or not they're worthy of whatever it is they're asking for, or whatever it is they're believing, that's super important to me. I also believe that a more equal economy, less wealth inequality, would create a stronger and more resilient community where more people would have an opportunity to thrive, and we would do better by all of our children. So that's also super important to me. And I'm glad to be here with you all today.
There were 1,004 residents of Thurston County surveyed as experiencing homelessness in the 2025 annual point in time count. This survey is widely understood as a dramatic undercount of the actual number of people sleeping in doorways, wooded areas, and places without basic necessities for human survival. Additionally, there are over 2,450 people active on our coordinated entry waitlist for placement into shelters and available subsidized housing, which is all typically full. We will have space for policy discussions soon, but how do you feel about the current homelessness crisis and why? And we'll start with you, Caleb.
Yeah, I think for me, two emotions come to mind. And that's just one, being heartbroken. And the other is being angry. You know, I feel heartbroken because we live in the richest country, possibly in the history of the world. But we have neighbors who are sleeping on the streets, sleeping in their cars, sleeping under tarps. Some of them are, like Robert mentioned, you know, are working poor, people who are working as hard as they can. You know, some of them are inner-city transit bus drivers. And I think about the thousands of people in the city that I've talked to as I've knocked doors. And I know that there are people out there that are compassion fatigue. And I get that. I've lived downtown myself. And I've been woken up in the morning, you know, by somebody who might be experiencing a mental health crisis. So I understand that that's frustrating, and I know why people feel that way. And that's kind of, you know, the part that makes me angry because I think about homelessness as a condition being created by an economic system where housing, healthcare are unaffordable, and the cost of living has continued to skyrocket. And this is in contrast to some of the richest people in our country who have created this condition by hoarding wealth, whether they're pharmaceutical and insurance oligarchs who, you know, have prevented people from accessing affordable healthcare that almost every other Western country has, whether it's private equity and banks that are sitting on real estate that drive up the cost of housing and of land. And I think about, you know, the people who are literally dying because of that. And that makes me angry. And what makes me even angrier is that that has really nothing to do, you know, with you or any of us here, that none of us created that system. But those people are turning us against one another. You know, I see, when we see this compassion fatigue, you know, people being angry at their neighbors for something they themselves did not create. And as we see cuts coming for a tight city budget, for a tight state budget, I just want us all to remember that this is not a system that we created. And as a community, we have to come together with that compassion and our understanding that our neighbors are often where they are of no fault of their own.
Yeah, I think the unhoused and homeless, the system needs to be triaged because I think there are people that are living paycheck to paycheck. I have gone into the jungle twice now and met people that are literally just trying to get out of there. And they want to work, and they're not, you know, addicts, or, you know, they just need a helping hand up. And I really believe that we, as a community, need to give those people a hand up because I think that's important. Because then it's one less person that we, you know, as a community, you know, if they can just get together with their kids and work and be productive, that's great. When it comes to addiction and mental illness, I truly believe that what we are doing is inhumane. I have witnessed people die of overdoses on fentanyl. I have spoken to many individuals that have lost family members because of overdoses. I was a community corrections officer. I witnessed people overdose on drugs when I was a community corrections officer. But I don't pretend to know all the answers. So this time running, I actually asked a person who made it out of the jungle, four and a half years clean and sober, and another person who was a 29-year drug addict, 12 and a half years clean and sober, to kind of help me, to guide me. Because I really, truly believe that that's where the answer is. And to have an ego about it, to sit behind a desk and make decisions about what people who are addicts or, you know, for me to make those decisions, I think is just wrong. I think the answer lies with people that have gotten themselves out of it. And I think that's very important.
Thank you.
So a lot of good emotions have already been dibs. But I will say that it infuriates, I can't even say that word. That's like trying to say acetaminophen. That it infuriates me that we have made a choice as a larger society to say that we'll have beggars, that we'll have people living on the sidewalk, that we won't provide healthcare access to a large swath of our community. That's super frustrating. But I also want to tease out that when we talk in our community about homelessness, we're really talking about two different issues. One is, how can we help survival and meet the needs of people who are struggling and don't have shelter? And the other thing is, how do we ease the frustration of housed people who are doing okay but are very uncomfortable interacting with people having their crisis on the sidewalk, or interacting with the mess left behind from somebody who camped the night before in a doorway? And those are two different overlapping questions and issues in my mind. And I think, for me, it centers, my main feeling is that I have very little tolerance for othering, for creating a whole category for people and saying, "Those are whatever kinds of people and are not worthy of love. They're not worthy of resources." That, I just, I can't abide.
I appreciate the answer, Clark. I mean, it is frustrating. It's exhausting. As a city council member being on this side of it, you know, it's, you wish, if we had all the money in the world and all the staff in the world, I would be outdoing it right now, right? And I think of, like, it's almost like our climate work. It's the mitigation and it's the resiliency. Like, how do we ensure that people don't fall into homelessness? And how do we help the people that are currently in homelessness, are currently going through a crisis? I mean, it is, there is a cliff that exists, like the benefits cliff, that is, you know, a mile wide and 100 stories high, where people who are trying their best each and every day are struggling, whether they've fallen into homelessness or they're very close to it. And I always remind folks that we're always closer to falling into homelessness. Most people are very close to a couple paychecks away, as has been brought up. And so, you know, I'm nervous, you know, with the social safety net being cut at the federal level, with the amount of folks I've talked to who are on Medicaid and Medicare in the community who are very nervous. I, you know, Caleb talked about the compassion fatigue problem, where when you go talk to people, they're, they see them as their neighbors. Most people do. But they also feel burnt out. They feel exhausted. And so I think as a council, we have to reexamine that and think about, how can we bring hope to folks in a time when people are not feeling very hopeful about government? How can we, as a government, work to ensure that folks have hope, and we provide opportunities, and we work with our nonprofits, and we work to push the state to give us more funding and help us out? So, yeah.
Wendy, I'll start with you. What do you see as the most effective actions the city is currently taking to decrease homelessness? And what tangible improvements to the city's strategy to decrease homelessness would you take as a council member?
Well, I think we've talked about this, you know, quite a bit. I think, you know, I doorbell, when I doorbell, you know, people ask me what my three main points are. And, you know, we build a lot here, but is it really affordable? Because I'm now starting to call it attainable. Because, you know, affordable is kind of like irrelevant when you're paying $1,800, $1,900 for an apartment. Like, most people can't afford that. So I really think that we need to build attainable housing, you know, where, I think that most of this panel has talked about, like, what does that look like? And really, sitting down with developers and builders and, you know, the city and really figuring out, how do we build attainable housing that people can really afford, instead of just building a lot of great-looking apartments that are really expensive? You know, for me, homelessness, you know, I'm a boots-on-the-ground person. I like to be in it. I like to go to the jungle. I volunteer with We Heart Seattle. It's a very simplistic way, but they go and clean up abandoned homeless camps. Sometimes homeless people are still living there. They make relationships with them. And they usually try and get them to help them, give them a $25 gift card, build relationships with them, and then, you know, eventually ask them if they want to go to treatment. I have started a We Heart Olympia down here because I think it's important that homeless people are seen and they have a voice. I think a lot of times, those voices are lost. And I think a lot of people are just really lost and don't have a voice and don't know how to get out of it. And I want to be their voice. So I think it's important for them to be seen.
So I am really fortunate to have been along on the journey with Interfaith Works of first asking the city to open the doors for cold-weather shelter, to begin accepting that we might have a role to play in addressing the need for emergency shelter and the need to attend to folks who are on the street. And as the years have come along, the response has really grown. And it's not all city policy or city actions. It's a whole constellation of non-governmental organizations, faith communities, and local governments together. I think that one great example, if you think that being homeless, the answer is to have a home, then housing, of course, is central. And the large apartment complex that's going up just towards the freeway from the East Side Food Cooperative is an example of city staff bringing together federal and state funds, a developer who creates long-term affordable apartment complexes, working with the other local governments to create home fund dollars to go into the project, and putting City of Olympia resources into it to create long-term affordable apartments. That's, there's all of this other stuff, but really, if the issue is homelessness, then homes are the answer.
I agree with Clark. I mean, before I got on council, you know, we started, we did the Home Fund, and then I'm the alternate to the Regional Housing Council, which is a lot of what Clark was talking about. These have helped the community countlessly. It's emergency funding when a fire happens at Sandy's Flats, right? It's ensuring that we have the support available in the community. But I also, I mentioned also keeping people from falling into homelessness, right? And I think that part of that is pilot programs, right? We worked on an affordability pilot program this last year. It's only, it only has like a couple of years on funding. But that was after having conversations with Habitat Humanity about our whole process at the city of cost, cost utility, the permit process. How can we work better as a city to work with those nonprofit developers to develop housing for folks, right? And these are, and, you know, these are folks that are working, mostly working-class incomes, but that keep people from falling into it because the private market is not supplying the housing for stability in people's lives. And for me, that's, I feel, is also critical to that, to getting there. But I also, you know, believe there are other things we've worked on over the years that we're starting to integrate into our planning, such as the Black Homes Initiative and other work that is going to help us focus on injustice and ensuring folks are supported. Because for me, it's, you know, this is similar to the conversation we had about 10 protections, right? And housing is a human right, and we need to, we need to work on providing that. You know, it's, for too long, it has been just a profit-based system, and a system that stability at its core comes from shelter and having a place to live and having a home.
Yeah, I agree with what's been said in terms of, and I said this at the beginning, you know, in terms of the city deserves a lot of praise for the work that it has done, the fact that it has been, you know, so proactive in the last few years compared to other cities, in building the transitional supportive housing, in partnering with nonprofits and, you know, others throughout the region, in creating a crisis response team to be some of the, you know, walking units around the city who are serving as some of the first points of contact for people who are experiencing homelessness, who are experiencing mental health problems, who are experiencing... who are experiencing mental health problems, who are experiencing addiction. I mean, you know, these are great steps. Other people who deserve recognition, you know, include other regional partners. I, I think of, you know, our partners at the Squawson Island Tribe and the Chehalis Tribe. You know, thinking about the, the Chehalis Tribes Initiative to stand up a, an addiction services team that is not just for members of their tribal community, but is also members for all people in Olympia. You know, that is, that is a level of compassion and grace that I am not sure that, that, you know, as a descendant of European colonizers, I'm not sure that we deserve. My efforts will be focused on expanding those efforts. So, you know, working regionally, I, I hope to create a public housing option. Robert, I agree with what you said. The, the private market is what got us into this affordability crisis. The private market is not what is going to get us out. So working regionally, particularly with the Thurston Regional Housing Council to provide, you know, to create a public developer that could create public below market rate housing, mixed income housing. Because one of the, one of the things that I see is a broken housing pipeline. Yes, we have transitional and supportive housing, although, you know, one of the questions earlier really pointed to the fact that even those are not serving everybody that they could be. But there's nowhere to graduate into, you know, the kind of the attainable housing Wendy that you were talking about. You know, I look at it as working class housing. Those, you know, we, we're, we're good and we could, we should continue to focus on that 30% and below AMI housing, but also the working class housing, that 30 to 80% AMI. So people don't fall into homelessness in the first place and it's easier for them to get out once they do.
You all went to the connection to homelessness and affordable housing really quickly. So I'm not sure.
You probably just go to.
Unless there's anything that you all feel like you'd want to add to the.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Police play a vital role in the culture of our city. What is the city currently doing in regards to policing that you are supportive of? And what would you like to see improved related to the Olympia Police Department? And I believe it's Clark.
Thank you. Law and order, the rule of law, I, I, in, in my, my reading about what's going on around the country, the promise of civil society is super important to people across the political spectrum. And, and it's, it's certainly come up often in our, you know, the, the many, we get to talk to strangers, acquaintances and friends a lot in this campaign season. And last night, the Community Livability and Public Safety Committee of the city had a briefing from interim police chief Shelby Parker describing what's going on right now. And I'm, I'm really proud and some of the things are hard for me to accept. But I think as a pragmatist, they, they make sense in terms of the interventions we might do. I, I don't want a justice system that criminalizes poverty. And I, I want a system that seeks restorative rather than punitive justice. But I also want people to feel safe going about their day, right? And reported crimes are down in Olympia. Most of the violent crimes happen between people who know each other. There's very little risk of harm from a stranger. And there's especially a very little risk of harm from an unhoused person who's on the sidewalk. So how are we addressing the public safety? More jail nights is the first one that, that wasn't really super exciting to me. But there is a place that a patrol officer or a, or a unarmed alternative response person can consent somebody. And that's to the jail, which now has both substance use and mental health resources, social service resources, walking patrol, the alternative response, and our new partnership with the county courts for more diversion alternatives for people coming to misdemeanor court. I think are all actions that are making a difference and, and helping everybody.
You know, I, again, I, I think about what, what came before I was on council and where we are and where we're going forward. And so when I, I, I think about like our police oversight work that we've done, I think of our police auditor, I, our reimagining public safety work, which has gotten us, like the crisis response unit and other such things. The police, I mentioned the police auditor, but I would say that expanding on that, thinking about like, our crisis, like our crisis response for people in, in mental health and that need help around drug addiction help, right? These are services that are hard for a community because they're usually nonprofit driven and they're not always available to everyone, right? These are, this is the casework that we're missing and for a lot of our folks in our community. And, you know, I, you know, I believe that continuing to transition away from just having police op, moving away from just police officers being the only response to things is where we need to go. Because an officer shouldn't be in charge of absolutely every incident. Because people in crisis don't need a police officer. They need, they need help. They need services. They need casework and they, and they need the things that match their needs. And so I, I believe in the work we've done and I think going forward, we need to continue to expand upon that and allow for services to help folks.
Yeah, I, I think it is vital for us to acknowledge the important role that police play in our city in keeping our community safe. All of our first responders really, from, from our firefighters to our crisis response team, you know, they deal with some of the worst situations that our, our communities face, right? And yet with that immense trust and that immense power that, that law enforcement has, that requires both the right tools and the right oversight. We have to acknowledge the historical and current behavior, you know, of, of police officers around the country. You know, creates a broad distrust between police officers and, and members of color in our community as well. So I appreciate what the city has done, particularly in creating three forms of oversight. You know, the civilian police officer, police auditor, the Office of Professional Standards and the Community Policing Board, those are, those are crucial. And yet I think we are asking police officers to do too much. Robert, you kind of highlighted that with the amount, I mean, we have them on traffic enforcement. We have them investigating crimes. We have them investigating narcotics. We have them responding to nuisance abatement, abatement, mental health crises, overdoses. This is too much and it's for, for one category of officer to respond to. So what, what I would propose is a shift where we really have two categories. And, and that would be our traditional police response. We, we have the ability to respond to, to threats in the community, public safety threats. But also a group of, of, you know, community, community resource officers, like our crisis responders, you know, who are made up of people from helping professions that are, you know, more equipped to deal with kind of the, the everyday, the in and out of, you know, what you need when you're interacting with citizens, that de-escalation, that connecting people to resources that they, that they might need. This is backed by, you know, in my mind, the data, the police auditor this year released their 2024 report, found 54,000 phone calls to 911, 76. That's point 0014% of responses required to use of force. So clearly the vast majority of our responses, you know, even if we quadruple that, you know, we need nonviolent response options that serve our community. And this is an approach backed by former police chief Rich Allen.
Yeah, working for the Washington State Department of Corrections for 20 years, I worked very closely with law enforcement. On several occasions, I had to call for police backup and they had my back. So I will always back the police. With that being said, I don't support bad policing. And, you know, one bad police officer doesn't make every cop a bad cop. So I think we really need to pay attention to stigmatizing all law enforcement because of one bad cop. With that being said, I think familiar faces in the community response unit that, that this city has implemented. My friend used that one time when her son was in crisis and had to call 911 and the police came and immediately backed out and called the response unit. And she had nothing but great things to say about it. So I think Caleb just said, you know, that it's a great resource that they have because a lot of times I think when you're in a state like that, the last thing you want to see is law enforcement. So when you have, you know, someone who really knows how to talk to somebody that's in that state, I think is very important. You know, after talking with a lot of law enforcement in OPD, it's been very hard to recruit for them. They're down a lot of officers. We pull from the walking patrol that we pay a tenth of a percent for. When you talk to businesses downtown, they want the walking patrol, but that walking patrol always gets pulled because they're down officers, because patrol takes precedence over it, which I totally understand. But we need to get back to supporting officers, making them feel supported. So we can have, we can be full staff so we can have a walking patrol down here and make sure our small businesses are taken care of.
Interfaith Works is a coalition of diverse faith communities who work together for social justice, peace and relationship building. We recognize the important role that faith communities play in our society. Describe how you would recognize and/or engage with the various religious and spiritual communities and traditions in our region. Robert, I believe we're.
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, I, I was, I don't talk about this very much. I was raised Catholic. I was raised to believe in helping others through, through, through the religion. But I, I don't practice it as I used to. But I, but I do try to practice it in the sense of like San Francisco of Assisi, helping others, doing what you can for your community. These are the things that I, that are core to my value. And I, and when it comes to the, the city of Olympia, you know, I have so many friends from different faiths and different organizations and different backgrounds that I, I believe that they're valuable parts of our community. I, I love going to all of the, the various events and, and parts of our community that have different culture and, and just being a part of those communities and being invited in. And I think that that's critical to where we are and our, and, and the identity of Olympia. I've lived in communities where that wasn't true, where it was essentially one religion. And there was no, there wasn't a lot of diversity in what was available to folks. And so for me, I believe that continuing to support those folks in what ways we can, by protecting them and their, and their faith and allowing them to practice openly in our community without being targeted by saying that we're a sanctuary city and saying that these folks have the right to be here in any way they, they, they feel.
Yeah, you know, I'll really echo what Robert said. On the campaign trail, you don't get a lot of opportunities to talk about your spiritual practice or your faith. But it heavily influenced my, my decision to run. You know, I mentioned being, being raised by a, a union mom. And, you know, that it was a household where, yeah, we talked about compassion and we talked about helping your neighbor, right? And I, I always think of, you know, in, in, you know, the Christian text, the story of the Good Samaritan. And, you know, it's, it's one of the most impactful stories to me because, you know, when, when Jesus is asked, who is, who is your neighbor? Jesus gives an example of somebody who would, would have been the enemy of the current demographic at that time. And as we see, you know, inflamed rhetoric from Christian nationalism on, on the news. You know, I think of, of members of other faith communities, you know, of, of members of the Jewish community, the Muslim community, or even those who, you know, have a non-identifying spiritual practice. And how regardless their, their faith and their spiritual practice is driving them to do good for their community. And of course, this forum is an example of that, right? Being hosted by Interfaith Works. So I, I see a lot of the ways that faith communities within our city are, are driving forces for good and partnering with them, you know, is a benefit to all of our, our neighbors. You know, and I just, kind of like what Robert said, want to make sure that we make space for, for all members of, of faith and, and also those who, who do good in our community that don't practice faith.
So being a gay woman in the eighties, it wasn't real popular. And oddly enough, throughout my career at, at the state, people who were religious felt like they wanted to tell me how I should live my life. And it's where I really honed that skill of trying to be a respectful listener and listening. And one in particular guy was a Southern Baptist minister who would, I mean, he said horrible things to me. And by the end of the, the tenure that we worked together, he told me that he really respected me and really respected how I was as a person and as a mom. And to me, I think that is how, no matter what religion you are, you need to be respectful and listen and communicate and, you know, and, and hear people. Because I think that we live in a world of not listening and not wanting to hear. And I think if you really listen and you really hear people, you probably have a lot more in common than, than, than you believe. I think the churches can play a huge role in helping us get it, get us out of homelessness. Because I think most people that go to the churches, especially around Thurston County, are very compassionate and are very giving and want to give. And I really think that they can play a huge role, just like Interfaith, Catholic Community Services, to really help us, you know, dig us out. Thank you.
Well, first I just want to honor what Wendy's saying because it's true that faith communities and people of faith have done and are doing a lot of harm by othering, judging, excluding people. And at the same time, the, the faith community I'm part of, First Christian Church, and the people from other communities that I'm with at the Fellowship of Reconciliation, Peace Vigil on Friday afternoons, the folks I've visited at the Islamic Center of Olympia, the Masjid or at Temple Beth Hatt Filo, are, are people who I share so many values with and, and have been so glad to work together with. I'll make a confession, I'm an old white Protestant church guy, but I don't like any salad that has Jell-O, marshmallows or Miracle Whip as one of the ingredients. That's just, that's off the table for me. But I, I am really pleased, I'm, I'm on the board of my church and a sometimes preacher at, at our, our church. And I find a lot of my centering on the difficult issues comes from my interactions within my faith community and with other faith community members from across the town.
Hey. 16.8% of the US population over the age of 12, or about 48.4 million individuals, met the criteria for a substance use disorder. And 23.4% of adults over the age of 18, or about 61.5 million people, experienced any mental illness, with about 5.6% reporting a serious mental illness. And so clearly our country is facing a mental health crisis that includes significant struggles with addiction. How do you see mental health and addiction impacting our community? And what steps would you take as a councilperson to support all people who need access to mental health resources?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I think we, we see visual representations of, of how mental health and addiction impact our community. You know, just, just about every day, you know, with it's, especially with, with homelessness, it can be a very public thing that somebody might be going through when they, they don't have the private space. But of course, there are lots of people who are not homeless, right? Who are, are dealing with that privately and secretly in their own homes, right? My home was one of them. And so, you know, I understand the impact that addiction can have on a family and the reverberating impacts that it can have on the community. In terms of the, the steps that we can take, I, I look at this as needing to address this regionally. You know, this is one of those issues that does not respect, whether it's Lacey or Tumwater or Olympia or Thurston County or Lewis County or Mason County, right? So working together as a region to help continue to establish forums where people can get the mental health that they deserve and the addiction service counseling that they deserve, working, you know, with our tribal partners who are standing in some of the most successful and progressive programs in our community. But again, we're really, you know, to really take on this, this goes to the problems with our healthcare system. And that's going to require partnership with the state and investment on the state. I was really glad to hear today, for example, that Washington has decided to back pay all funds for Medicaid to Planned Parenthood. I hope that they decide to do something similar for mental health and addiction on a local level. Because we're really going to need their help if we, if we want to begin to address that.
Yeah, I really believe that we need to increase our mental health and substance abuse. I, I think, you know, you can, you can't be in Olympia and not notice that there's mentally ill. I think the mental health professional, I think it's, it's, it's a hard place to get people into. I visited the free clinic and there's, I believe, a four month wait for the, for the free clinic for mental health. So, and even working with Department of Corrections, it was, it was a, it was a wait. And that was, you know, in the early 2000s. Substance abuse, it's a fallacy that you have to wait for substance abuse treatment. I could get you a bed today for substance abuse treatment. I could get you a bed today for substance abuse treatment. I think for the severely mentally ill, I think, you know, closing or closing beds in we, eastern and western state was a disservice to the severely mentally ill. I'm not talking about locking them up, I'm talking about stabilizing them. Because my guess would be that they are the most, most vulnerable on the streets because they're taken advantage of. And I think that really it's inhumane to keep them on the streets in the condition that they're in. And I believe that they should be stabilized.
Both mental health and substance use disorder rob our community of potential, rob our community of capacity, rob our community of joy. And it's not a poor people issue and it's not an unhoused people issue. And unfortunately, we keep conflating those two things. And that's because it's our own personal inconvenience of walking by somebody who's having their crisis in front of the pizza shop. But if, if we truly want both mental health and substance use to be considered medical issues that deserve medical treatment, then it's a campaign more akin to fighting for domestic partner benefits through insurance or allowing chiropractic and massage, right? It's, we're, we're, we're not having a very robust fight about the stigma around substance use and, and resources for living with or treating substance use. So I, I feel really strongly about this. And this is, this is a place where I have both lived with immediate family members who've had these crises over and over again. And I've lost close relatives repeatedly during the time I've been on council to overdoses. So it's, it's both real in my life and I also don't think it's fair to consider it a poor person or a person unhoused issue.
I, I appreciate that, Clark, I really do. And I appreciate you speaking on that. I mean, it's not easy when you have family that are going through things like that. We heard this, I've heard this several times up here, that the, that is both, it is, it is beyond, it is not just a homelessness issue, it is a issue that most people and they're, they know someone that goes through it, right? In their lives. And, you know, this, this also, you know, I'm glad Kayla brought up the healthcare system. And so I also think of the debt that is related to some of this work and the fact that there isn't enough public access. We have, and there's a new facility I've been meaning to go to that's down on Franklin Street that was just put in. A classmate of mine from Evergreen actually is the manager there. So I, I really need to swing by and see, see a lot of the good work that they're doing. But for me, I think about like some of the opportunities we do have, right? The abatement council work that's coming and some of the funding that we're getting. It turns out Thurston County pulled out of that recently, this, this week. But we as, to help with their budget, but we as a city, as cities have to use that funding for something. And I hope we use it to help the, the clinics that are available, to expand those services, to do what we can. I ultimately would like us to have a public facility that's ran by the cities and the county with federal, or state dollars if it's available. Because we need to have a public place for people to go to where people, regardless of their insurance, regardless of their background, can come without the stigma and have the support that they need.
Thank you. Wendy, climate crisis, climate change is a present reality impacting our region. What is your assessment of climate mitigation and preparation strategies the city is or should be prioritizing?
Well, I think you'd be, have to be living under a rock to not know that climate change is real. And it cannot be ignored anymore. I mean, with the forest fires that we're having across the country, even just in the state, I just got back from Pullman last weekend and the smoke over there was incredible. So I think you'd be naive to think that it's not real. So although our, our state, the state budget was 125 million and they only pu-, put in 60 million to fight fires this year. And when we know that this state, I mean, routinely through the summers have burned up, we need to really mitigate the, the forest fires that we're having and the, the flood situations that, that we're having. We, we see it continually with, with our rivers. And so I think it's important to really do our part as a city and mitigate anything that we can within the city limits.
It's, it's my strongly held belief that a, a low carbon, weaning off of petroleum fuels, renewable energy future is both practical and it would be profitable. But the transition is painful. And at this point, our local efforts have focused on encouragement and education without any sort of regulation. And we've actually seen a net increase in both pollution and in energy consumption in our, in our community. And, and part of that's because we're a growing community. But, but nonetheless, if our goal is to reach net zero consumption of petroleum fuels and, and no greenhouse gas pollution, we're, we're not on that road just yet. And I know that that is a, a super challenging transition. Something I'm encouraged by is the Olympia Community Solar and our Energize Thurston Heat Pump Programs that if we use our public energy and our public resources to go to apartment complexes and other folks, other places that are less likely to invest, I think that's where we make the most impact. But I also would be in favor of really making the decision to transition and discouraging big vehicles and people polluting more now than we were at the beginning of this discussion about climate change.
Yeah, I'm, I'm on the, currently I'm on the, I've had the privilege of being on the Climate Collaborative for the, the region and also being on Sea Rise Plan. So we're looking at the mitigation and the resiliency work. Clark mentioned the Energize Program, which has been very successful because housing is the biggest cause, cause of greenhouse gases in the county, followed by transportation. And so it's like the distance between things and the things that we live in and, and, and do our lives in and work in are the things that cause the most effect. So for me, you know, I was just at our retreat for the year and with the budget tightening and the amount of money that we have, you know, one of the things I, I keep thinking about to meet the goals in the climate mitigation plan, because there's a lot of specific goals and changes that need to be made, some of which are policies that haven't been made yet at all. Though, that's going to require growth in, in our program. It's going to require expanding the ILA and securing funding permanently so that we can actually get those goals done, beyond the education, as Clark mentioned, trying to actually in a, put laws in, trying to do the investment that's needed. So for me, I believe in the future that there may be a, a place where we have to expand the ILA into something that's, that's more sustainable budget-wise, but also is closer to something like the way law functions, where it is its own organization that does the goals that we need to get to.
Yeah, Clark, I really appreciate what you had to say, you know, particularly about renewable sources of, of energy. And, you know, it, it has been a truth for over half a decade now that renewable energy jobs have outpaced fossil fuel jobs. And I think that that if we have one piece of education that we could continue to hit on, that, that would be it. That especially in our, in our region, you know, we have a lot of opportunity for renewable energy jobs, as we do throughout the country. I, I think what we can focus on, particularly with climate mitigation strategies, are those tangible benefits. And there are a lot about what, you know, Robert and Clark were talking about, these tangible benefits that everybody can feel. And part of that is the way that we design our city, right? So that means denser housing, which tends to be more energy efficient. That means creating mixed zoned neighborhoods so that there are less vehicle miles traveled. That means having roads that are not designed for these large vehicles, right? That are designed for transit, for walking, for biking, for rolling. You know, those are the tangible benefits that I think can really help. Because transportation is one of the highest carbon emitters. Robert, as you said, second, you know, only, or sorry, is one of the highest carbon emitters. And then it's one of the highest costs to a family, aside from the housing itself, transportation is. So I think when, when we do that, you know, it also, not only is it, does it make economic sense, it also benefits our environment and our community.
Olympia exists on the seated grounds of the state chest people who continue to uphold traditional wisdoms and customs. How would you assess our engagement and involvement with regional indigenous tribal members? And finally, describe why this is an important issue.
Am I kicking this one off?
Yes.
Thank you, Corey. I am really proud to have been part of the, the Groupon Council who reinvigorated the conversations with the Squawson Island people, reasserted an accord between the tribe and the city, and have, have really been collaborating about opportunities to, to use both of our strengths together. This has culminated recently in the tribal enterprise purchasing the former city hall site on Plum Street with plans to be developed, that property. It's also, it was punctuated by our renaming Priest Point Park, where there had been an Indian boarding school, to Squawson Park. And, and then it's, it's made visible each time we come to work at the city hall by the Squawson flag flying alongside of the federal and, and state flags. And, and I'm also really honored, I was at the ceremony for Evergreen State College, similarly recognizing that they're on Squawson land and flying the Squawson flag there. So I'm, I'm very optimistic about the relationship. And I, I also feel like the, the tribe has a lot to contribute to our understanding of climate, our understanding of the natural world around us, and our understanding about how to treat people.
I agree. The, you know, the convention center, we're working on a, a welcome statue right now where the dam will be removed, or they are, and it's, it's being put in. So these are, these are just small things, but, but big things in the community, investments in the community by, by bringing in and, and trying to mold the future of the city into the culture of, of Squawson Tribe. It's also involved in our planning process, our comprehensive plan chapters, all, almost, you know, most of them have the feedback from the Squawson Tribe. From the beginning, we, we ensured that their voices would be involved in that. We sent in drafts, the chapters, we ensured that they, we acknowledge their relationship with our environment and with our community. And that's, that's critical going forward, I believe. And it's a good, it is, it is a piece of hope in a time when a lot of people, there's not a lot of hope in a lot of other things, but I, I feel very hopeful with our relationship with Squawson. And, and we meet twice a year and it is like, it is the, it is one of the best friendships we have.
Yeah, I, I look to the leaders of both communities to evaluate, you know, how this relationship is going. And, you know, from what I, I, I've heard Chairman Peterson of the Squawson Island Tribe speak at city council, he has spoken to the agency that I work for at the state. And, you know, from what his statements is that the relationships have been, at least in the, in the last 10 years, a cooperative and a fruitful one. You know, highlighted by what Robert and Clark have, have both said today, you know, regarding the development there at Plum Street. And, you know, also what I talked about earlier with the Shalas Tribes engagement with providing Olympians addiction and mental health recovery resources. You know, that highlights one of the reasons that it is so important. It's, it's, it's a fruitful relationship where when, you know, these two communities work together, you know, these two sovereigns work together, they can both learn and benefit from one another. I, I think personally, we have a, a lot more to learn from them. You know, the compassion that, that they bring and the cooperation that, that they bring, you know, is really a level of grace that, as I mentioned earlier, I'm not sure that we deserve sometimes. So learning, learning that from them. And I, I wear this hat everywhere I go, you know, and it says, "You're on native land." And, you know, it's, it's not, it's not to browbeat or highbrow anybody. It's a reminder to myself that we are on land that has been stewarded for the last over 10,000 years, you know, by, by the native stewards of the land. And we have had it for just under two centuries. And we have, we have already, you know, from my perspective, damn near destroyed it. And so learning from their stewardship is incredibly important to me.
Yeah, I think engagement with the tribal members has improved, but it still often happens after decisions are made rather than through partnership. Strengthening these relationships are really important. I've met with the Squawson Tribe and the Nisqually Tribe, and it was really a powerful meeting. I think tribal governments are sovereign and deserve recognition and respect. They bring a generational knowledge about the land and stewardship, which I just love that, how much they, they really care about their land and their family and the traditions. The culture traditions enrich the broader community and authentic engagement leads to stronger, more inclusive policy decisions. I was invited to a morning sunrise at the Percival Landing and it was two people from the Nisqually Tribe and it was drums and singing. And I didn't quite know what to expect and it was early, it was 7:00 AM. But it was such a powerful experience because the, the guy who was singing told us the meaning behind the song and the, the drumming. And by the end of a couple of the songs, I was crying. And I, I, it was almost oddly, it was like the spirit, you could almost just feel the spirit there. And it really brought me to, you know, like I, I really felt like I was a part of that and the, like the spirit was really talking to me. So I really kind of understood their, their culture a little bit. It was, it was a really powerful experience for me.
Okay, come to the end. So is there anything else in closing that you'd like our audience to know about how you plan on making our community a better place?
You know, when I, I, when I read this question earlier and I thought about this, I, I often think about the amount of people in our community that, you know, they're the ones who, who have said, "We want to climate action. We want, we want to be a sanctuary city. We want these, the, the, to work towards long goals to make our community a better place." And, you know, I, and that's the thing that gives me hope every single time I talk to someone in the street. I think people are aware that our budget is tight, people are aware that we're in a, in a tight situation. But the amount of nonprofits and organizations we have in our community, the amount of, of folks that see what's going on and say, "I, I love living here. I love living in Olympia and I want us to continue to be the, the place for people to want to live." And so for me, you know, it's, that type of inspiration makes me believe in government, makes me believe in our community. And I believe because of that belief, that we will continue on doing the things that we need to do as a community, regardless of where the federal government is, regardless of where the state government is. Mind you, a little bit tighter on the budget, but we have to try to do the goals that people set out, that we set out for ourselves, to, to, to ensure that our future is bright for future generations and for folks who live here now, and ensuring that it's affordable and welcoming and we meet our climate goals and it's safe and accessible. And, you know, the, and that, those are the things that bring me hope at the end of the day. And so I look forward to continuing to do that work and I'm, I'm hoping that folks consider that when they vote.
Well, a lot of our conversation, you know, did focus on, on homelessness, on affordability, but it then touched other areas ranging, you know, from criminal justice, policing, transportation, climate. And that really shows that nothing exists in isolation, right? And people certainly don't either. Part of my work as an attorney for the state and, and before that, as a policy analyst for the state, was examining complex policies and systems and seeing how they're connected to one another, creating solutions and wanting to bring my experience. And I, and I want to bring that experience along to create those solutions at the city council. I understand that the city is a city that's built on creativity and compassion. I see it at the door every time, you know, I knock on the door and I talk with somebody, there's always something that somebody cares about, whether it's, whether it's just potholes or whether it's being a sanctuary city, like Robert mentioned, whether it's taking on climate change. And in these, you can see that, yes, there, there is a lot of compassion- And in these, you can see that, yes, there is a lot of compassion fatigue, but there is also a lot of hope in those conversations as well. And for me, it's, this campaign has been such an opportunity to engage with the community and really engage in realizing that that is the bedrock of our democracy. And that's the type of leader that I want to be at city hall.
Olympia is at a crossroads. We can continue down the same path, spending more, expecting less, and watching our city struggle, or we can choose to lead with clarity, compassion, and common sense. I've spent over two decades working directly with people facing addiction, mental illness, and housing instability. I know change is possible because I've seen it one person at a time. I've brought together voices that go unheard, people have turned their lives around to help us build policies that actually work. I believe in restoring pride to our city, revitalizing our downtown, and ensuring public safety through smart, community-based strategies. I believe in housing that's affordable and government that's accountable. This isn't about politics, it's about people. It's going to take all of us working together to get Olympia back on track. I don't have all the answers, but I bring experience, commitment, and a deep love for this community. If you're ready for thoughtful, determined leadership, I'm ready to serve.
Listening to and respecting all people has been at the core of my work on city council. In cruder terms, I've described it as sort of kicking the doors open and holding the doors open so that more people might have a voice. And I think that's where the biggest opportunity for evolution and growth in the city operation comes, is of making sure that we're hearing voices and we're not choosing a narrow path and then defending at all costs and marching down the road. So, that's my hope, is that we continue to hold the door open and we continue to seriously listen to folks. I think that the one community plan with our 60-some public listening sessions was a great example of the kind of engagement that truly strengthens our community. And then I'll just close by saying, I can get food downtown after 8:00 PM. The parking stalls are busy, especially on the weekend. I love downtown and I have fun downtown. Thanks.
Thanks to all of you, the candidates today, for being here. Clark Gilem, Robert Vanderpool, Caleb Geiger, Wendy Carlson. We appreciate each of you for making time for being here. Thanks to SkyBra Media for hosting and for producing this forum.
Thank you all so much.